H Randall. K Van Bergen-Buttoe.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, could you please rise? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united in the soul. Thank you. This is the first meeting since the elections on Tuesday. It is our reorganization meeting. And so at this time, before we get into the agenda, I would like to know if there are any nominations for the chair position.
I nominate you, Bob, to be chair again.
I second that.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other nominations for the chair? Seeing none. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much. I'll have a little bit to say in a minute, but first I would like to take this time to nominate Herb Randall as the vice chair.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ben. Just so you know, anybody else might be interested, Herb said he would not be offended. So are there any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing none. Motion made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. And I would like to thank my fellow board members. I know that the amount of time that public sees that we spend here is nowhere near the amount of family and work time that it takes to be a board member. It is truly appreciated. You guys make my job easier. And I don't want to go much further without saying that I really do thank you all. And so we will end. Sorry. I'd like to welcome two new board members while one repeating board member. Congratulations to Tara on being reelected to the Whitefield seat. And congratulations to James on being, James Inckman, being elected as the Jefferson representative.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we move into the consent agenda. One motion to approve the minutes of February 18th, 2025, and approval of the manifest.
So.
By Evelyn.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Chris. Any questions, comments, changes? Seeing none. All in favor?
All abstained.
Any opposed? And we have one abstention, and the motion passes. Next is the public comment period. Is there anybody here that would like to speak during the public comment period? None at this time. The public comment period will remain open in accordance with New Hampshire's laws for 30 minutes from now. If you do have a comment you would like to make in the next 30 minutes, please raise your hand. We'll stop what we're doing, and you will be recognized. Thank you. And next is the superintendent's report. Dr. Anderson.
I do want to congratulate the board on passing the budget. Good job. I'm going to start with the principals' report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you guys?
Warmed up. I'm happy.
It's a lie. Just remember, it's fake spring.
That's okay. I'll take fake spring and then the next fake spring. So you've got the board report. I just want to highlight a few things. Under structure and finance, we've got some upcoming learning opportunities that we are fortunate enough to be able to send staff to different professional development out of state because of the Barre Foundation grant. We've got a team going to New York City for three days to visit three different schools. And then we've got our science team going to Philadelphia for the national conference as well. So we feel really lucky to do that. And we've got a group of peer professionals going to the Mount Wash to see, to be with Holly Bath, who does classroom management, behavior, and bullying harassment, and all kinds of things like that. So we're really fortunate to be able to do that and support our staff in their continued learning. District culture and climate, as you saw, Pro Start Culinary won again. So.
Oh, yeah. That was amazing.
We've got a team that just keeps on going. That's their third in a row. They head to Baltimore in April. The hospitality group also did a great job. Their first time out under Hunter MacLeod. And they had some respectable awards as well for specific categories, not placing in the top three, though.
Would you like them to come present?
Yes. You do? Okay. Yeah. All right. Sorry to take. Also heading out, this is that shoulder season between athletics, spring and winter, when a lot of our groups get out for conventions and that type of thing. Our FFA chapter is headed to the Mount Wash also in March, later March, for their annual state conference. Youth and government is headed to Concord for their pre-led session, and then they'll follow up with their legislative session in April. Robotics has two competitions. They are heading out tomorrow, and then I think it's the following week they head out. So lots and lots happening tonight. If you want to zip over to Berlin after this, North Country Music Festival, we have our band students and chorus students there, and Kat Carter is conducting the chorus this year at that festival. Do you have a kid there?
No.
Not yet?
Not yet.
She's got to be in high school, right?
Correct.
Thank you. All right. And athletics, no tonight? Okay, so spring sports start in March 24th. So the building will get really busy after school again. It's been kind of quiet. It's been really nice. Other things, if you want to have them on your radar, we've got The Promise in May. Progressive Styles is playing out for Public Concert in May. Our concert band is in April. And then the play is also, another play in May. So really busy from here on out. It's like a race. So that's happening. Under teaching and learning, that professional development piece, we've been working on helping our teachers get organized to get in and observe their peers. And it's under the framework of a document called The Culture of Authentic Learning, it's a call for short. And they went in to observe students and look for particular practice. And then we had professional development time where we had ed cafes. And so one teacher would host and talk about what they noticed, and then they would have some back and forth Q and A, and then they would rotate. And we did that in February before vacation, and today we finished up with those that weren't here for that meeting. So the nice piece that came out of that first one was that people were like, it's really nice to get in to see other teachers teach. And so we're heading into round two with a different focus point for our teachers this month into next. Also coming up in March, we have a professional development day on the 24th full day, and we've got all kinds of sessions set up for that to continue some of the work we've been doing with our ninth grade team, working on community connections, as well as doing some work to organize a field trip for our students to Jefferson for that Smithsonian Rural Life exhibit that's coming in. So we're pretty excited about that. I think that's pretty much it. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Lots happening. We had 12 minutes that were quiet. It was really good. And we're back at it.
Thank you.
All right. And you're welcome to come anytime. It's a great place to be.
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Scott.
Good evening, everybody.
Hey, Scott.
Hey, Scott.
Mine won't be as long as hers, as much as our salon question. But if you read through the report before, it's a lot of the same that I submitted in November, where our focus is on academics this year, on literacy and math. We continue to do the same work that we started out the year with. Those cookies look really good.
Please come get them.
No, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
There's cookies.
She literally makes them for everybody.
Everybody's welcome. There's plenty.
She's going to force them on you now.
So we continue to work with our consultants, CSS Consulting for Literacy, and then BMI with Math. We have a great session for BMI Math in February Professional Development Day, where all of our math teachers were in. They went back to the school here in the last couple of weeks and are putting together a lesson to share next week with the BMI instructor to talk about successes, shortcomings, and then how they can improve that. We actually have one teacher today share what she's going to share with the instructor with her students. So she showed the students what they worked on and then how she's going to present that in the kids' eyes. They were amazed to see that teachers are also doing the work behind the scenes. Just one big event coming up at Lancaster, just to be aware of, on April 9th, Wednesday, April 9th, we have a student-led conference and Title One Night. We're going to be doing that from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. schoolwide. Parents can come in, get into the classrooms, and really have their students lead them through what they've done this year, what they've been successful in, and then the challenges, and really get to see what literacy and math looks like in the school. The students will be leading their families through that instead of the one-to-one families with the teachers and the teachers talking the whole time. It's an opportunity for the kids to lead their families through. That's also the Title One Night, where it's going to be focused on math.
When is that?
Wednesday, April 9th, from 3:00 to 6:00. You're more than welcome to come. There's going to be math giveaways. There's going to be a math game that's going on throughout the school using a QR code, and families with their phones, and solving problems and trying to earn prizes that way. So our Title One team's been working really hard on that with that. We're continuing to move forward. We're seeing a lot of growth. Our NEWA assessments just came back from the winter assessments. We're really happy. We're not happy where our students proficiency is, but the growth is what we're really looking at right now. And the growth is high.
What's your success at grade level?
Per grade level?
Yeah. Are they meeting the grade level?
We're getting closer. We're getting, so that growth is getting closer to proficiency. Some grade levels are higher than others. Our eighth grade, our eighth grade is over 60% proficiency right now. So that's a shining star. We have a couple of other grade levels that are in that, in that range or close to that range. But the growth, on that NEWA assessment, we're really looking at the growth, how much growth they made over the course of the year. So from winter, last year's winter to this year's winter, it's looking good. So we're hoping, we're hoping that's going to translate over into New Hampshire SAS in the spring, in May, when we take those assessments. And we've got teachers that are pushing modules, practice modules, modules into their classes to expose the students to the testing tools and some of the language from previous release questions. So these are questions that have been on the New Hampshire SAS previously. They've been released by the state, so students are exposed to the language that they're using.
Is there anything in particular that school's going to be doing on the 24th of March?
Yes. Yeah. So all of our math teachers are going to be, so K through A, anybody that teaches math will be meeting with BMI again to share those lessons, to work through what they, BMI is the math consultant, to work through what they did with students, and then plan the next unit from there. We have our middle school, English Language Arts and Social Studies teachers working together, a unit plan for next year, so it's created really a learning map for next year. We have some CPR, first aid happening, some bus driver training happening. Unified arts teachers are getting together. Trying to think what else. I'm sure I'm missing something in there.
Special ed teachers and behavioral health team.
Yep. A lot happening here next, next week. That is next week. Week and a half now. Week and a half now. So a lot of moving parts. Do you have any questions about what's going on Lancaster?
Scott's been doing a fantastic job with his, especially the way teachers are working together now. Look back two years, and it's a complete change. It's a period of shift.
How's the?
Thank you.
I'll ask it for him, because he's not here. Has the cell phone, zero tolerance cell phone policy come up there?
Leading into February break, we had some kids that were trying to push it. After February break, we just said, you see it? Call the front office, we'll get it. It's been, there's been a couple power struggles that we're trying not to get in with students. But with that focus after February break of just zero tolerance, it's really not an issue.
I bet that's going to be reflected in the scores.
I hope so. I really hope so. Our staff is working really hard.
Yeah.
Is it, I know, Scott, one of the reasons that we were asked to, to really implement a cell phone policy was to address some of the behavioral challenges in terms of classroom management. Are you seeing a difference there with better compliance?
Yeah, we're not seeing nearly as many referrals. We're not seeing nearly as many kids arguing that teachers getting sent out for those power struggles of, I told you to this, you didn't do this. And now there's an administrator involved trying to talk the student down from what they said and figuring out how to move forward there. The focus, students are focused more. There are, you know, kids, kids are going to work around any rule that we have. So it's not perfect, right? Parents probably getting text messages when they go to the bathroom, right? We know that. We want to chase a kid in the bathroom when we're on cell phone. But as far as engagement in the class, we've seen a drastic reduction in referrals for on-task behavior.
That's good.
And I can speak to even some bigger data, in that we've had zero cyber secure, or cyber bullying reports that have been initiated throughout the school day this year.
Yep.
Where last year, we were probably 10 deep. Now, not to say it's not happening, but at least not initiated within the school setting.
That's no surprise. Yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Don't go.
So what, the Chromebooks at Lancaster, is that sort of resolved? Because I got an email about there was 12 missing or whatever.
25.
25 missing?
Yeah, at the middle school level.
Hold on.
Where'd they go?
So the way that our Chromebook works, Chromebooks work, the storage works in the middle school level, is that wherever they started their day, they're supposed to go back at the end of the day and plug them in the cart. What we were finding is that teachers had prep time, or teachers weren't in that classroom to start the day. So students are going in and either unplugging them, because they play games with each other, right? I mean, that's part of middle school behavior. Or take somebody else's computer, or if they left their computer at home, they grab somebody else's. So that management piece was, was an issue. And you're right, James, it was 25 there beginning, end of January, beginning of February. So what we did for middle school, six to eight, is we pulled all the carts out of the classrooms. We've got them in the main hallway. So students plug them in at night. We wheel them in, we charge them in a location, so they're all plugged in and all charged. In the morning, we wheel them back out. They get them from the carts, they use them for the day, and then they plug them back in. It's working right now, and then we're just going to continue. We're on week 24.
I think so, 2 a period.
Yeah, so.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
You must be a Lancaster student.
Yeah, definitely am.
She's my protege.
Good evening. Highlights from our report in Whitefield. The structure and finance piece, what I want to highlight there is the security assessment that we had from the Department of Homeland Security. They typically come around to schools, like every four years, they'll reach out, want to come and do just an updated security assessment. They take a look at things like access control, surveillance, emergency alerting, and give us recommendations that we can then use that verbiage when safe grants come out to help us secure funding to upkeep security measures and upgrade. So they came in, I can't remember the date they came, but we just got a report back about a week and a half ago that Rob has and Gary Brown, and we've also shared that with fire and police were a part of that assessment. So lots of people around the table, a very comprehensive look at Whitefield School and what we need to and forward. As far as culture and climate, we've had a number of assemblies over the last few months that have, have been really great with teaching kids different audience behavior. So we've had everything from progressive styles, where kids can be up and active and sing along and kind of yell and cheer, to a couple of weeks ago, having the North Country Chamber players with their, I think, a five-piece kind of, you know, orchestral group who came, and we had to practice being very proper and polite and everything in between. So those have been really nice experiences for our kids and a lot of exposure and situational awareness and how to behave in different situations. And then finally, much like Scott reported, as far as teaching and learning, mid-year assessments in January between NWEA, the literacy assessments, that we've worked collecting data for our CSS consultants, and, missing one. And then the modular assessments that teachers are using to help prepare kids for New Hampshire SAS, and then taking a look at what that, kind of analyzing that data. I'm working with Angie Smith in compiling some historical data for Whitefield, so we can really look at data over time, and then mixing up groupings so that we're, our groupings are very flexible, especially in literacy and in math, so that kids are getting what they need in a timely, in a timely way. So, any questions?
And how are your, your math and literacy scores?
Well, like Scott said, it's dependent by grade. We have some grades that are doing, you know, really, really well. And then we have some grades that need to, you know, bump things up. But it's so dependent on the group of kids. And that's why I'm working with Angie, so that we can follow cohorts and see how a particular cohort is doing over time, as opposed to just looking at fifth grade's not doing as well this year, or they're doing great. But we're following a group of kids instead of just looking at one grade for one year.
And like, if you had a teacher whose class is not doing too well, you give that teacher some support?
Yes. Yes.
Cheryl, can you talk a little bit about how the walk to read, how it's not a class and a classroom teacher doing that, how that works?
Yeah, so the, the walk to read model that we're working with the Thurstons on, it is structured into circuits. And if I talk about like K1 in particular, there's a very heavy focus on phonemic awareness and high frequency words, and, but also some guided and leveled reading. So students who, they do 20-minute circuits, and so they'll be with a one teacher in the class, and they might be doing really kind of quick sight word and help development, develop sight word fluency. But then for 20 minutes, they're off, and they're doing a different activity that might be sitting and doing a more traditional guided reading with the teacher. And then a third circuit that, and it's completely structured around what the students in that group need. So they're in there based on a similar skill level, and then getting the foundational skills in each of those circuits. And that happens for an hour and a half each day. And then we look at data after six weeks and see how they're doing and move them accordingly based on their progress.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Take care. So I just have just a couple of things to add. So I did go to New Orleans last week. It was a wonderful conference. It was a lot of great networking. It was fun, and it was great sessions. Thank you for letting me do that. And then, lastly, on the second page of my report, we talked a little bit about pre-K for next year, the three-year-old program. At the last Ed Programming Committee meeting, we discussed with them our thoughts about eliminating the summer school this summer and using that Title One money to hire a three-year-old pre-K session, pre-K teacher, so that we have that three-year-old session. And that would be, it's not completely in stone yet. You can see in my report that it's going to be at least a four, four-day full-day program, and we're striving towards a five-day full-day program, so that traveling and daycare and all of that doesn't get in the way. So by the next meeting, we should have this tripped out. We looked at the, the cost last summer and the attendance of kids, and it ended up being $1,000 a child, and the attendance was not great.
That's the summer school?
Yep. And so we thought this would be much better.
So what will happen to the students that need summer school?
There'll still be summer school for mandated services through IEPs.
And Mike is going to come to the next meeting and discuss extended school year services, what it is and what it isn't, and how it's going to look this summer. That's a completely different funding source.
Okay.
And that's mandated through, through, through the federal law. What we felt like was so sporadic, the attendance of the kids, so nobody was there for the longevity of the program. And I get it, in summer, people take vacations.
Yes, yes. It is summer.
And, and with the default budget, we didn't, we don't, we didn't have a fat Title One carryover. So we will give you the definite plans at the next meeting. I just wanted to give you a heads up on what we're, what we're striving for.
Parents will be happy to hear that.
That three-year-old program?
Yeah.
Oh, it'd be, yeah, it'd be amazing. Yeah.
Yes. Been asking for that for a long time, yes.
Yeah, next time.
Because we used to have it, you know? And then there's so much clear evidence that the earlier we start programming, the better students do for the remainder of their educational trajectory. The unfortunate thing is if it's not something that's mandated and funded as a mandated piece of education, then we have to fit it within the local budget. So when the district leadership team came to, I'm skipping a little bit, because we do have Ed Programming in the committee's reports, but when they came to us at the committee meeting and suggested it, we were, we could really see the benefit. meeting and suggested it, we were, we could really see the benefit of, you know, a dedicated program that we know parents are gonna take advantage of because they've been asking for it to come back.
Yeah, it's gonna be nice for them to see that we were listening.
Yep, versus the, the summer learning camp structure is really the, the piece that we're talking about not holding over the summer, which was three days a week, just in the mornings, and as Marion said, super sporadic attendance for the small number of kids that registered. So in terms of the longitudinal benefit, educational benefit to our students.
Marion, so it's, the decision is gonna be forthcoming in terms of LES or Whitefield to have it at? So that decision's, what's it based on?
It's gonna be based on, we're gonna look at the building, you know, the three-year-olds need a bathroom in their classroom.
Right.
The transportation piece, we're gonna look to see where the kids are. So there's, there'll be quite a few factors that we'll look at to make that decision.
Any other questions? Superintendent leads us to the Assistant Superintendent.
Yeah.
Just Scott.
So you folks have my written report under structure and finance. It's just kind of a, a heads up of what's coming at the next board meeting. You're gonna have a double public hearing to accept unanticipated revenue hopefully in the way of a transportation grant through CTE. And basically what this grant does is help create transportation opportunities to solve inequities that may be holding kids back from participating in CTE. So I think about our kids here who, if you cannot get here personally by 7:10, you can't engage in programming in Littleton, because that bus leaves here at 7:10. And the unfortunate part is the first student bus that shows up here is about 7:25. So what this van is gonna allow us to do is any of those kids starting to show up at 7:25 or 7:40, we can load up to six of them and bring them over to the Littleton program. Then they'll be able to take the bus back. The other thing it does is Littleton offers a second round of programming in the afternoons. So if it doesn't fit a kid's schedule, we can send a driver over there with up to six kids. So I wrote it that we could increase participation in CTE for up to twelve students with just this one opportunity. So it is to purchase another Chrysler Pacifica van for that, for that purpose of getting kids equal access to CTE.
The fleet.
How many of that, how many of those will that make it?
We all have three Pacificas and three transits. But I'll tell you, since we've been back from vacation, all but one day, we've turned trips down because, or, you know, local in-house transport, just because they're, they're so busy with our out-of-district placements and impact and, you know, special ed, job placements and whatnot, so. I could not free one of those vans up, so this was an opportunity to, to access funding. It's leftover Perkins money from the past few years that's accumulated, and they have to spend it, so they put it in way of a $2 million transportation grant. We just took advantage of it.
Great, great.
The second one is what's called an industry-recognized credential grant for program improvement. As we are growing our diversified ag program, there is a use, and recommended by the Program Advisory Committee, to purchase a side-by-side UTV, utility vehicle, that will be used to access the Sugar Bush and different areas of the property. It will be purchased with all-season tracks for the winter, so they can access down in the woods with it. It'll allow them to earn industry-recognized credentials by doing the, the OHRV for those kids that don't have a license yet, pesticide application, as well as support wilderness first aid. If we were to have a, a student injured down in the woods, this vehicle could be used to go get them and, and get them back. So you will have that, and, and in the following board meeting, you'll approve the purchases of these if you so choose to.
Now, Scott, what's, have you decided, have you decided which brand?
We reached out to several companies. So we worked with moms to look at Polaris's, we looked at Nolts to look at Kawasaki's, and then we looked at Dalton Mountain, looked at Can-Am's, and ultimately Dalton Mountain was gonna give us dealer costs on everything, and they're a local taxpaying company.
Can-Am?
So it'll be a Can-Am Defender 900.
That's probably the best brand in my experience.
Yep. But yeah, we, you know, we met with the three major producers and retailers in the area, and we settled on Can-Am, not only because of the price point, but also, you know, they're a reliable machine.
Very good.
And they're local.
Are we talking like thirty-five thousand dollars-ish?
Twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine.
Is that with the tracks?
With tracks, yeah.
And the plow?
And the plow.
That's, that's a good deal. I was gonna say, it's about thirty-five at the dealer costs.
Yeah.
So excellent.
And then under district culture, just getting in more of a pattern of recognizing when folks donate to our CTE center. But Mitch Doolan for the second year in a row donated $598 in heating oil. We also sent his paperwork down the state so it could be applied towards his business tax credit for CTE. But it's nice because his son is heavily involved in the program, and I will give you this date, this weekend is Maple Weekend, eleven to, or ten to three both days. Come up, check out the Sugar House. It'll probably be young Mr. Doolan leading the church. So weather's supposed to be good, bring, bring cash checks, they'll have fresh.
You can go see the animals as well.
Yeah, and you get to see the animals.
That's awesome. It's gonna be beautiful on Sunday.
Yeah. And then last but not least, Patsy already alluded to this, but the ProStar team won their third championship in a row. The, the management team came in fourth, which is very respectful. And what was nice about this is they're not disappointed. You know, Chef talked to Rotary the other day about this, and the kids were all nodding their heads. They had set a bar, especially with the restaurant management team for so long, that people are finally caught up, you know? So it's good that people are striving to, to beat you, and then it kind of re-energizes you to, to reload for the next year. I originally invited them to come share their story with you today, but Chef gave them two weeks off as they prep for Nationals, and he needed to take a day off today. So they'll be at the March 27th meeting to show their hardware and share their story.
That's good.
Great job.
And they, at Rotary, they replicated what they did at the.
Restaurant management.
It was awesome.
It was a tater tot truck.
It was buffalo tater tots.
Spicy maple.
And eggs and bacon. It was really good anyways.
Really good milkshakes.
And it was sour.
I wanna keep far more point, they get the greens.
That's good.
All right, that's all I have, folks.
Any questions? So now we move on to Melissa.
Okay, I have a few things to talk about. So the first one is action, related to action, again, the item two. We went back and forth on this and trying to find, trying to find the best way to work out the fact that we have so many criminal record checks going through the state, and they are not fast. So staff learned that we were, would be able to set up a prepaid account with them, that we'd maintain a balance on, that we could draw, and when it would reach a certain level, we'd have to refill it. So it's an item to approve because we have a policy that says the school board approves all depositories, and technically they're gonna be holding our money, so. But I think the limit's like 500, but we think this is really gonna.
Help streamline a bit on our end.
Was it shit like fifty dollars?
Forty-seven.
It went down.
And we pay for all the substitutes.
Second thing I wanted to bring up is related to ProStar, Chef is going down with the kids. To help him, we would like to add another district credit card with a limit for him. It would also help with his shopping during the school year. I think it would be really beneficial in that aspect. We are probably going to have a limit of 3,000 to start, and if we needed to raise it in the future, we would come to that, but we're gonna start there. And technically Marion, through the policy, has the ability to assign or sign for those, and it doesn't have to be an agenda item, but we wanted to bring it up so that it was in the minutes, so that in case the credit card company questioned it, we would have that. So that's the plan.
Just Chef is the only one that will have it exist.
And what we've been doing in the past when they go to Nationals, and it's a pain, because you can only get prepaid cards for so high, than 500 bucks, is we used to have to go purchase four of them, or five of them for 500 bucks, and then you have minor balances on that.
Not in all the expenses are on that.
Yeah, it's just his, there's only a few in the district anyway. The smaller ones have specific purposes.
So Tony has to keep on winning.
And then the last thing is, I said I was gonna print our budget estimate every meeting, so I'm gonna continue to do that. Right now, it looks like it's going up because I scrubbed the, kind of our personnel section. Our, we always hope to have a full staff. At this point, again, we don't, so I've relieved those encumbrances with the anticipation that we're this far into the year that it's probably not gonna happen. So that's where you're seeing that kind of increase there. We'll be starting to work with the principals about kind of projecting their expenses through the end of the year. So there'll be some changes. Keep working on it.
Any questions?
Just, are you gonna try and do a finance committee meeting at some point in the near future? I know we were gonna talk about the policy, nobody could get together.
I was gonna send out another email. This was kind of a busy week, but I'm gonna send a follow-up email and see if people wanna get together, if they're comfortable reading on their own.
Yeah, I, I think that was gonna be my point, I said, was I think if we just can discuss it even, even online.
Yeah, I'll offer that, I can offer that.
Try and get the, the process going, you know? I sat Tuesday with the net voting for quite a while, and I have some notes I would like to share with you, you and I and Marion or something at some point, but the, I think if we could work the policy out, that would be a great start. Please.
That raises a question for me, Ben, and maybe it comes at other business or something, but are we reorganizing committees as well?
Yeah, I was just, when I get to the committee reports, I was just gonna make that announcement.
I got fresh caffeine, so I'm gonna snap it.
You're ahead of me. Is that, any other questions from, thank you very much, Melissa. As we get into the committee reports, there are actually two announcements. One is, first of all, the committees. So if you have a committee you'd like to be on, or a committee that you don't want, no longer want to be on, please let me know. We'll hopefully have a reorganization of all the committees at the next March meeting. James, just so you know, we tried to make a policy that new board members always sit on the facilities committee, and it's the easiest way for you to learn.
Yes, it is.
All the buildings and what goes on to them, so. Absolutely. And Evelyn, I'm gonna ask you to chair it, since James Brady has been the chair, so. But as, other than that.
Is that official, so I can invite him to the next facilities?
So it'll be Evelyn, James, and Ben, I'm assuming you'll stay on.
That's fine.
Okay. So the limit is three.
James, doesn't, doesn't during the day at 10 o'clock?
Yeah, that's the only problem. Yep, that's fine. It's once a month, right? Yeah, usually, once a month.
And Ben usually attends remotely if you can't.
Okay. So other than that, any other.
When Gary knows how to use the microphone.
Any other, other board members, and you too, James, if there are any committees that appeal to you, just let me know, and we'll finalize that all next meeting. And actually, I would want, should have announced at the beginning that I would be remiss to say that in a long, long time, we haven't had a select person at one of our meetings, and I want to recognize Peter Russo as the new Whitefield Select Person. And then we'll go into the Ed Committee Reports. So the first one is Ed Program.
Yeah, we've actually touched on the two primary conversations we've had most recently in Ed Programming tonight already, one being the three-year-old preschool, the other being the data that we're starting to see with regards to performance in the schools. And as Mr. Holmes suggested, there's, there are two different ways to look at that data. One is at our proficiency scores, how many kids are actually meeting proficiency for their grade level. And the other is how much growth have we seen in the kids who have not yet hit proficiency? And so we did, Angie has provided us with some really well-formatted data tables that, as Cheryl said, allow us to follow a cohort as they progress up the grades. So we can see how the class of 2032, for example, has been doing in third grade and fourth grade and fifth grade and sixth grade, and we can follow their trajectory rather than saying this year's fifth graders did better than last year's fifth graders did better than, but we can, we can look at both. So what we're seeing is that we knew we had low proficiency scores. In the last year, we've seen really substantial growth at getting to those, those spaces. And that's important because you'll have a couple of years of growth, and then suddenly your proficiency scores will, will catch up, as it were. And in particular, we're seeing growth in some nice subpopulations of student, students. So for example, our students on 504s and IEPs are making really good ground. And, and we're seeing more movement in the kids who have lower proficiency scores than we are in the kids that were at the top, which is kind of what you would expect when you're doing this kind of targeted instruction to really help our kids get caught up on those fundamentals and move forward. So that's where we're at there. We have another meeting coming up next week, next week, next week or something, very soon, next week or two weeks from now, where something new will come up, and then we'll talk about that at the next event.
Thank you.
Facilities, we meet next week.
Thank you.
10 a.m.
Wednesday?
Third Wednesday, 10 a.m. in the office, Central Office.
And James, if you need a link.
Please.
Let me know if you need to tend remotely.
Uh, no, I, I should be, I should be good. Personnel, nothing new to report. Policy.
Well, yes, you can report that the support staff contract passed.
Yeah, that's true.
Yes.
You're right.
Come on, take them with you.
Support staff contract.
We're gonna pass these around.
Which is once approved.
I thought, I thought my Girl Scouts were bad, Evelyn, but.
Take more than one.
No, thanks, I'm sure good readout. Yeah, you can pass them out to the group. Unfortunately, we're still waiting for the final printout from Michelle Plow.
We just need to have it signed.
So we can sign it.
James, hopefully we have it for the next meeting.
We will make sure.
That's, that's your job.
You've been deputized.
Well, we can do, we can do it at the agenda items, that would, we talked, I talked to Chris. So policies, we have a bunch on the agenda, action agenda, so we'll discuss them as we get to them there. District wellness.
District wellness, the facilitators met on the fifth. Thanks, I think it was Mr. Scott for taking the notes? Was that you that got stuck with that?
No, I think it was Ms. LaBounty.
Ms. LaBounty then. Well, whoever did it, they did a great job at it. Because unfortunately, I was called away at the last minute for a family emergency, so I wasn't able to, to be there. But we did have report outs from each of the subcommittees. So in the social, emotional learning space, there's been some movement on the district becoming a recovery-friendly school district. There's a very solid program that's been in place for a number of years now across the state for recovery-friendly workplaces, and the, the process really involves helping employer spaces, including districts. We would be the second in the state to be a recovery-friendly district, align their HR policies so that supports are available for people who are impacted by substance use disorder or who live with it themselves, but also provide resources like free Narcan for the Nalox boxes that are in the school and that sort of thing. So Katie McKinnon is spearheading that process, and in, in the recovery-friendly designation process, one of the things that needs to happen is an assessment of policy, and very nicely, she discovered that our policies are already quite aligned with the effort. So it's a, a nice way for Sparta to, to shine as being responsive to the needs of its community. We also, the nutrition. Um, we also, uh, the nutrition folks are talking about the food pantry at the high school and looking at donations, um, for snacks and drinks and thinking about whether outside donations could potentially be, um, solicited for that. The safety group talked about working on parking at the high school during basketball games and, um, addressing the lack of a smoke detector in the elevator. I'm assuming that's Whitefield School and that that was temporarily disconnected by Capitol at some point, but that's been fixed. One of the policies we've got tonight relates to chemical, um, safety practices. And they did talk about a chemical hygiene plan that's being worked up by our facilities gang. And then, um, in the security subgroup, they talked about the Homeland Security Audit that Cheryl has reported on this evening. And also that they're testing a system at the central office for buzzing folks in. Um, and Carrie, uh, leads our PE and health space. And the conversation there, which has been an ongoing conversation for a while now, is that we really do need to have a health teacher, um, who can specifically deliver health curriculum. What's been happening so far, as I understand it, is that our, our teachers have been working health components into their classroom, um, time. But there's really a need to have a health teacher that can deliver, um, evidence-based health curriculum to our, to our kiddos, so. Um, and then, uh, the PE teachers are looking to visit other schools within the district. So, kind of seeing again that, um, that collaboration between schools for, for yet another type of instruction, so. Good work all around. And I really, really appreciate the, the facilitators taking time to share those pieces because they work really hard each quarter, you know, between the meetings to, to move things forward, so. It's a lot of work.
So the, uh, the health teacher, you're talking about, do we have a health teacher, position, or is it gonna be?
Not right now.
Something that we're gonna develop?
It's what the staff would like, I don't know, Marion, if you wanna speak to me about that.
Well, what, what we do now is, um, it's kind of hatched out. The science teachers, if there's something in their curriculum that is related to health, the PE teachers, the school counselors, the nurse. But we really do need somebody that has.
Well-rounded.
That has it all. Even if we did have a health teacher, the nurse still may do something, school counselor still may do something, but it would be aligned. Um, it's, it's a budget issue.
They're making sure that the standards are met.
So that would be like a certified, a certified teacher?
Yes, there's a, there's a certificate from the state.
Okay, so that's my forte, sort of thing, health, as being a nurse.
Yeah.
All right, very good.
Yeah. It would just allow for the whole process to be less fractured and more consistent.
That'd be great.
Yeah. That's what I can tell you about that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Any unfinished business?
Well, I have something I wanna bring up.
Okay.
In, recently, we had two parents present to the board with legitimate concerns. Were they followed up? Who followed them up? Was the parent involved in the follow-up and was the parent satisfied with the follow-up? What was about a book?
Oh, yes, yes, it was definitely followed up.
Okay.
And it was resolved.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Because I, we, I never heard anything about this, so that's thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Because if we don't, if they don't feel like we're listening to them, that's when you start getting the problems. Thank you, thank you, Marion.
Yeah. And, um, the seven, eight transition.
Right.
Team is, uh, they met this week and they will be reporting out when Mr. When will you be reporting out on your work with the seven, eight transition?
We're gonna, at the, uh, first, uh, the April Ed Programming Committee, we're gonna present some information to them first. To find out how much we wanna come out in a broader sense. Um, but basically, we're looking at various scenarios, looking at the pros and cons for teaching and learning, and then what the budget impacts would be. So you folks are better informed in the decision-making you need to do.
So is this the one, the committee that I was on?
Yeah.
Great. Yeah, so we worked on that very hard. And didn't we sort of determine that space was, was a major factor?
So that, uh, now would've been a year and a half ago when we gave our recommendations to the board. We said we were gonna reevaluate for the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year. When space become, you're, you're looking at two hundred and fifty kids in this high school in twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Versus?
Right now, there's three thirty, when we did it, there was about three seven.
So isn't that awesome, one twenty-ish?
I can also send you, James, I got, today I got the, uh, spring update for the enrollments from this, this day. I'll send those to you.
Yeah, Marion sent it to me, but wanted to send that to all of the board members. But I was surprised that in, in the elementary school, it's showing increased enrollment over the next, in like ten years. But a decrease in the high school, so I, it didn't follow the way the numbers looked. All the graphs were going up except for the high schools, which is, was level, actually. And I was curious how, does anybody look back to see how accurate this?
Actually, they've been, they've been very accurate.
Have they?
Beck Scott emailed me today after I sent it, he said, it hasn't changed much.
I know, but spring, the spring update that we just released is, is almost, it's pretty similar to what they released when we looked at in the fall.
Okay.
And it's just, it's a sharp, sorry, I'm yelling back here. It's just, it's not, it's not a huge decrease, um, from this year until twenty-six, twenty-seven. It's about a hundred students roughly, from where we are district-wide now until two years from now. So it's, we're sitting at about, um, eight ninety right now, is that right?
Does that include pre-K?
It wasn't good.
No, it doesn't include pre-K, K through twelve, we're sitting about eight ninety, nine hundred, depending on the day moves in and moves out. Uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, we're getting closer to around, uh, eight-ten, eight-twenty. And that, don't, those, please don't quote me on those exact numbers, I'd wanna look at the graph. But it's a decline because our current junior class, one hundred and ten, does that sound right? So it's about a hundred, and then if you look in all the other classes after that, they're, they're smaller, so.
Yeah, this was an outlier.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the scenarios, the first one we're gonna present is stay status quo. And you'll see what that could look like.
Parents, remember I was the community sort of liaison, how's, have you done a parent survey yet, or are we not at that point yet?
Actually, the board asked that we're not gonna do that because we got all the feedback that we needed. And we're just gonna make the decision, the board is gonna make the decision to do it or not.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other old business? Any new business? Seeing, we will move on to the action agenda. Action Agenda Item Number One, to approve the following athletic and employment nominations, provided the programs are to be offered. Samantha Cushing, varsity softball coach, Laura Longevan, JV softball coach, Alex Gano, varsity baseball coach, Matthew Hammond, track and field head coach, Audrey Springer, track and field assistant coach, Shane McElhenny, boys tennis coach, Michelle Gross, girls tennis coach, Maxwell Hodgson, middle school softball coach, Brody LaBounte, middle school baseball coach, Hunter McLeod, middle school track coach, Bob Arcan, tennis volunteer, Bill McCarty, tennis volunteer, Maddie Lorenz, tennis volunteer, Tara Giles, track volunteer, Art Hammond, track volunteer, Tyler Hicks, baseball volunteer, Cory Silva, baseball volunteer, and Robin Baker, White Mountain Regional School District, part-time occupational therapist at a salary of fifty-nine dollars per hour. Do I have a motion?
Still moved.
By Chris, seconded by James. Any questions?
It's just a question that, it's a process question for me that I don't know why I've never asked before. When it makes it to this level, have, we already seen their background checks, have they already been fingerprinted, or does this come before that?
It's in the process of, some already have it, some of these are, you'll see these names a lot of times. It's in the process of, and their contract always says, provided that criminal record check comes back.
Okay.
Just like the teachers' contracts, you have to have your certification in there.
Yeah, I just, okay. So we approve them with the caveat that they pass a background check?
And, and even if the background check isn't done and first day of the season starts, they have to be supervised by somebody who does have a background check?
Okay.
They won't, they won't be allowed to start without it.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
All in favor.
Motion passes with one abstention. Action Agenda Item Number Two, to approve the establishment of a prepaid account with the Hampshire Department of Safety for educational criminal back records requests. Still moved, moved by Ben?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Tara. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action Agenda Item Number Three, to approve the following policies for amendment. AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity employment, and anti-discrimination plan. DK, payment, checks, and manifests. JJIC, eligibility for school athletics. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it for discussion.
I'll second it.
Moved by Chris, seconded by Ben. And discussion.
Now, Bob, I didn't have a chance to read it, um, so.
Well, yeah, no, that's.
The first two, the first two, um, policies, um, we brought to the board last time for an emergency approval because of the Title IX changes. And they seem to be pretty benign. It's, I think that what we're gonna be talking about tonight is JJIC.
Right.
Which is an acronym for?
For, well, it's.
Eligibility of School Athletics.
Oh, JJT.
Yeah, all the policies have letters that I don't know what they mean.
Yeah, it's like.
It has nothing to do with the name of it.
Okay, just there, yeah. Just there.
Jay is all the students, so anyways, eligibility for school athletes, what, given, um, the president's executive order to, um, not allow transgender girls to play on girls' athletic teams. That's what this, the change in this policy, but what we're gonna discuss. Our current policy says, everybody plays. So, we also got an executive order from NHIAA that says that we need to abide by the president's order. So, this is a discussion.
We gotta talk about that.
Yes.
Um, James, in your package is?
It's the green one.
It's the green one, so that's.
It's a lot of, it's a lot to, it's a lot of reading.
And basically what it's saying is.
Oh, I hear, I'm sorry.
What they wanna do is, where's that language?
JJIC.
Among other things, HP wants to limit participation in girls' middle and high school interscholastic athletic teams to individuals whose biological sex is identified at or near the time of birth. The state statute further requires that each local school, school board adopt and enforce policies to ensure compliance with this statute. It applies to all schools in which any of grades five through twelve are taught. And applies to both formal interscholastic athletes, athletics, as well as any school-sponsored club athletic teams. And it also says in this policy somewhere that they have to provide a original birth certificate to prove that they were a male or a female at birth. And, uh, recommended language is gender-specific teams for middle and high school teams. Each interscholastic team approved by the school board for any of grades five through twelve shall be designated as a boys', girls', or co-ed team. Teams designated for boys will not be open to girls, and teams designated for girls will not be open to boys. For the purpose of this section, a student's sex is determined by the birth certificate or other evidence as described in section above co-ed teams are open to students of the same sex. So that's the big change. Because we had this discussion months ago and we decided we were not gonna put this in. And this was before the, the president's order.
Right. So, my first question is, what are the consequences of not changing our current policy?
You know, I don't know if NHIAA would let us be in NHIAA, do you know that, or not?
I don't.
Because, well, from, from what I read about the Title IX changes in the executive order, it says that you're in jeopardy of losing federal funding if you allow a transition girl, a boy, girl, to play on a girl's team. Doesn't say that you're in jeopardy of losing funding if you don't change your policy.
That's semantics.
It's semantics, but, like everything else.
We don't have that issue in.
Well, and that's the, the thing.
Why we voted the way, yeah.
It could happen tomorrow.
It could.
It could happen tomorrow. Um, so I'll, I'll just be very, very clear, um, there's definitely a fine line to be walked here between not risking the funding that we rely on as a district as a whole. There's an incredibly, um, aggressive environment for grant holders right now across the country in a whole bunch of different sectors. And it's certainly being made clear that if you don't follow the executive orders regarding statements about biological sex being binary and, um, diversity and equity policies, you risk not only current funding, but also being, um, being branded as no longer eligible to seek any additional funding. So the, the financial impact of not following the executive orders is very real. Um, and it is being felt across New Hampshire and Vermont already, in a whole bunch of different spaces. That said, this district has worked really hard to create a culture of safety for all of our students. And walking back policies, um, that have established our schools as safe spaces for all students feels antithetical to the work that we've done. It's also an immense waste of administrative time to rewrite policies, to dial them back, and then potentially, if this is litigated, bring them back up again. It's, it's a bunch of unnecessary rework. And an executive order stating a binary sex assignment doesn't undo decades of science, it just doesn't. But what it does do is create feelings of a lack of safety among students and staff. Today's students and staff, and those who may enter our district in the future. Um, and I, I personally, I can't support a policy that leaves a situation in our district brewing where kids don't feel safe being their authentic selves. There's plenty of evidence right now that shows that LGBTQ youth have the highest rates of suicidality, the highest rates of self-harm, the highest rates of substance use disorder and substance misuse, and it is largely tied to feeling like they don't have safe spaces. And they don't have acceptance in their community for who they are. A statement made by a tired physician or nurse in a labor and delivery room landing on a birth certificate does not, in fact, create a statement of biological anything. We're not testing the DNA of our kids when they're born. And there's a percent and a half of our population that is intersex. And, and you can't say definitively male or female. So it's arbitrary and it's rooted in fear mongering, it's not rooted in science. And we, as an educational system, need to uphold evidence-based practice. Dialing it back, it feels bad to me. It feels like we send a message to our kids and their families and our, our staff, particularly around the LGBTQ population, that this is no longer a safe space. So, for whatever else happens with the other policies, I personally, I cannot support the amendments to JJIC. I appreciate the importance of maintaining our funding and I, I see that it's a fine line, but it's, it runs completely in the face of science and best practice and it puts our kids at risk.
I think what I need to do, I think we're gonna need to table this again, I think I need to get in touch with NHIAA to see if we don't adopt this, are we disqualified? Because their executive order came down on us, so I meant to do that and it's.
It is, it's probably also worth touching base on the funding issues because, I don't know if that's a council question, Marion, but I just feel really strongly that, that at least one vote on this policy needs to, to voice the support that's existed for our community for a long time and, and say out loud, this is nonsense.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, and we've, we've bunched this policy in with a couple of others that we probably, none of us have a problem with the, um.
With the others, no.
It's still a waste of administrative time, but it's.
I agree, yeah. Well, one of them is new, actually.
Uh, there's one? Are there's one?
Hmm, there's a amendment, yeah.
Just check, because it was one.
Oh, it's just, all we had to do is put the anti-discrimination sentence in with the policy, ACF.
Oh, the food and nutrition services, anti-discrimination, civil rights.
Yes.
The other, one of the other ones actually references the Boy Scouts of America. There is no longer a organization called the Boy Scouts of America. As of last month, I believe it became Scouts of America.
They've changed their name, but the scouting organization has, was established by Congress. So they're tying back to the original congressional act.
I see. So there was a motion made and seconded. Is there a motion to table?
I'll, I'll move to amend the action agenda item to remove JJIC until further research can be done.
Okay.
So a motion is made to amend action agenda item three to remove JJIC.
As long as I know that the comfort in the safety of the, the girl who is in the locker room with a male, I mean, that was my thing from the beginning. They have to feel, have a safe place too, right?
Sure, yes.
Yes, you're saying that we go off the safe spaces to all our students.
What I'm saying is, the science shows us that a transgender girl identifies as a girl. And what we have heard in our own community is that our transgender students, the very last thing they want to do is have a conversation about their genitalia with other people. And to, to be exposed in a locker room setting, they want to be private and they don't want to be paid attention to in that way. And what the science shows us and what decades of data shows us is that a transgender person being in a bathroom or a locker room is far more likely to be the victim of a violent crime than they are to do anything untoward for other people in those spaces. Those, those fears are promoted by people who don't want to welcome non-binary members of our community. There's just, there's not evidence to support those claims that there's a safety risk.
Everybody should have, be afforded the safe space.
I agree with you.
That's what I want.
I agree with you. And, and the, the data for decades shows that it is not unsafe to have a transgender individual in the bathroom of their choice. What is unsafe is that transgender individual being highly likely to be confronted by cisgender individuals and potentially assaulted. And that has happened in our district. So, you know, in, in the geography of SAU thirty-six, not necessarily in our schools, I can't speak to that specifically. But we've heard from our community members that those things have happened where the transgender student has been the victim. And that's, that's equally unokay.
We don't want that. We don't want that either.
Your, your point is valid, Evelyn, but the, the, the simple fact is the data does not support that.
As long as I'm heard, because I want it on the record that that's what, that.
Agreed.
It has to be addressed.
In most reality, as far as I understand it, Evelyn, nobody, boys or girls, are using locker rooms anymore, right? Then there were no more kids getting done with the game, going taking showers here at the school. Am I correct? They're go, they, they're staying in their uniforms and they're going home. I mean, whether you're gay, straight, or whatever in between, they're just not.
Well, that's what we talked about last time, Rob. That we, it wasn't even an issue that came up. We didn't have to address it.
Well, I mean, so there's a new motion to remove JJIC from this action agenda item. Is there a second? I will second it.
So are you saying remove this call?
Just for tonight. And so we'll bring it up at the next.
So like tabling a move?
Yeah, we're going to table this one policy.
I'd like to table it, just so I can get more info, if you don't mind.
Good.
Pete, did you want to say something?
I was going to ask if this is open for public discussion, the next period of public discussion.
Anything's open for public discussion at the next.
Yeah.
It's open for tonight.
Yeah, no, yeah.
Thank you.
Did we get a second? No, we didn't.
Yeah, Bob seconded the motion.
I seconded it. So the, the motion was to table the whole action agenda item till the next meeting?
No, was to table, to amend the action agenda item to table JJIC until the next meeting. Just pull it out of this action agenda item altogether.
Okay. So motion is made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One, Evelyn for or against table?
No, I, I agree with you.
So we're tabling JJIC until the next meeting.
Okay.
Yes. So now we will go back to approve the following policies for amendment. AC, non-discrimination, equal opportunity employment, and anti-discrimination plan. And DK, payments, checks, and manifests. Do I have a motion?
I'll, some move.
On the amended action item three, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. So it's just the first two, AC and DK.
Okay.
Motion made by Tara, seconded by.
I'll second it.
Evelyn? Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Action agenda item number four, to waive first read and adopt the following policy, ACF, food and nutrition services, anti-discrimination, and civil rights complaints. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Chris.
I'll second it.
Second by Tara. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number five, to approve the following policy for first read. EBCH, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan.
Some move.
Seconded by Ben. Any discussion?
Yeah, this isn't to be confused with the actual plan. The plan is an R, and it's very limply and Gary's working really hard on it. This is just saying that we need to have.
Have a plan.
So it's my understanding that, I mean, what I, from what I, like, why saw? Teachers are not allowed to bring their own life saw or any?
Any chemical in this building has to have an SDS sheet located in the space in which that chemical was in.
What about hand sanitizing in the purse?
That, I.
I'm just trying to point out.
So you could argue the purse is their personal belonging. But for use in the classroom, the.
Has to have MSDS.
Yeah, and, and that's Department of Labor in OSHA. And we have to have those safety data sheets on, on every, and it's not that we wouldn't, if a teacher really wanted something in their room, let us know so we can do the research. That way our nurses and our maintenance staff can respond appropriately if, if a chemical spilled or was misused.
I mean, I just think it would, needs to be really put out to the staff that, that's going into it.
What we're going to do is, once the plan is done and it's like, what do you have, twenty-seven pages, Gary, something like that, we are going to create one cheaters to give to teachers, to give to nurses, to give to cafeteria staff that affect them, you know?
I just think the important part really there is the staff education about exactly what you just said, Rob. We need to have the sheets in the building and it needs to be there so that facilities and health staff can respond appropriately if there's a spill or an exposure. Because I don't think it will surprise anyone that teachers are constantly bringing stuff from home into their classrooms. You know, we're a district that's been two years on a default budget and running skinny with the one that just passed and it's, they're always bringing stuff from home. And so it's just really important to make sure they receive that education proactively. Because I can see setting up classrooms in the summer.
And, and I'll tell you, that's a, I did a pamphlet three years ago and stressed, if you want a chemical that you want to clean your desk with or whatever, let me know so I can have the SDS sheet. You know, that's the big thing.
Okay, any other comments, questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number six, to accept and appropriate unanticipated revenue in the amount of eight thousand dollars from First New Hampshire Robotics, First NH, to the White Mountain Regional High School Robotics Program, to be used to offset program-related expenses, including, but not limited to, registration fees, robot parts, and materials, tools and equipment, travel, lodging, meals, and teachers' stipends. Funding for this grant is provided through the First NH North Country Project, a multi-year program made possible by the Neil and Louise Tillotson Fund and First New Hampshire.
I'll move it with appreciation.
Yeah, moved by Chris.
Yes, much appreciation.
Second by James. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number seven, to approve the first aid CPR training for staff members not to exceed six thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars with funds to come from the Life Safety Code Deficiency Capital Reserve Fund.
Some move.
Moved by Evelyn.
Second.
Second by James. Any questions?
That's for the entire district staff?
So that's for up to one hundred and twelve. So it's sixty dollars a person. We tried, we tried many different companies. You know, years ago, we tried, we used McGregor's out of Rockingham County and they just don't have the personnel to come north anymore. We have some field trips that are coming up that we really need to get people certified. We've had some kids move in that need access to EpiPens. We need our staff to know, you know, how to administer them. We've had kids move, coming in with some severe diabetic needs. So the, the time is right to.
School board policy that if you go on a field trip, you have to have CPR.
Who's doing it?
So it's Chad and Lisa Miller. It's a, it's an online, so staff will spend two hours online and then they get a certificate of completion and then they show up to a field day for one hour. They prac, you know, they do the.
Skills.
The CPR skills. They do a C, a simulated AED. They do a simulated EpiPen and so forth.
Good, off of sixty bucks? Keep in mind, a lot of staff already are certified. No, I just, to me, that's significant enough money.
That's, yeah. Well, and moving forward, what we're probably going to look to do is, is at least budget for a third of our staff, you know, yearly to become certified. Typically, they're two-year certifications. This one honestly kind of jumped on us when we started thinking about who's going on field trips and.
Yeah, no, it's tis the season for field trips.
And this is a not succeed. We may not fill all of them. But I, the Millers told me they can do a hundred and twelve people that day, so I budgeted it for a hundred and twelve.
Okay, nice.
And Stephanie's keeping a, a data sheet now so that we know who's certified, when the certification's off, and who needs it. So it'll be much easier.
Part of the issue is some people that have done it through the school before would give their information to staff. She had hers. Some coaches that are also teachers did it through Carrie. She had her sheets. And now everything's getting collated together, so we have a better idea.
Takes two seconds to run it.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Action agenda item number eight, to approve the replacement of the exterior door at Whitefield Elementary School from Portland Glass, not to exceed eight thousand nine hundred dollars. Funds to come from the Life Safety Code Deficiency Capital Reserve Fund.
That's a crazy amount of money for one door, isn't it?
It's a special door.
No, I know, I know.
Motion made by Ben.
At the facility.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Chris.
A, a lot of the, the expense with these doors is getting the old one out because they are put in place and filled with concrete.
Right.
The other thing is, is we're moving to aluminum insulated doors and you saw what happened to aluminum recently.
Get it now.
What, when, do that soon?
Gary, April break?
Um, I'm going to check with Mike and see what they're doing.
We've got the door now so that it's, it's secure.
Okay.
But it's.
Yep.
We're, we're definitely, it's the original door from whatever, nineteen ninety-one.
The most costly thing with these doors at Whitefield School is the labor, because all the.
Laboring tents, yep.
All filled with concrete, so it takes forever to rip these doors off.
Yeah, we discussed this.
It's a re-freement. Okay, thanks, Gary.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded. Any further questions? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries unanimous. And action agenda item number nine, to accept the following resignations. Jenny Dynan, Whitefield Elementary School, music teacher, effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Chelsea Perry, Larnacast Elementary School, fourth grade teacher, effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five. And Macy Smith, Larnacast Elementary School, kindergarten teacher, effective June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
June twenty, it's supposed to be that.
June thirty, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's written twenty, okay. June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a motion? By Chris. Second by Evelyn.
Jenny will be this.
I was just going to say, I mean, I don't know these other two folks.
I can't speak to Larnacast teachers because I don't know them, but ooh, that's going to be.
With appreciation.
You're going to have, you're filling a lot of spots.
Oh, that's nothing.
Wow.
All in favor?
With appreciation.
No, yeah, Jenny is just, Jenny has done a lot.